All right, let's all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call of the officers, please.
Ms. Kowski.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Rubel, you hear? Deland. Here. Bowen, here. Riley.
Here.
Locas.
Here.
All right, we have the agenda in front of us. We are going to make a modification to the agenda. We are going to move the international fire code under new business A, or actually D A, up underneath Chief Gratz's report. Any other changes, additions, or corrections to that? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by trustee Deland, do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Bowen, any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, that motion carries. Moving on to the minutes from the August 19th meeting. Anyone have corrections to that?
I do. On page sixty-six.
Page sixty-six. We're in the minutes. We're in minutes. Hopefully, minutes are on page sixty-six.
I'm at page sixty-six, you know?
I do, but that's, we're in the minutes right now.
Oh, no, no. Sorry, I have two things I need to talk about.
I think on page four, we do need to make a correction at the very top there where it says, "The blight at Dub Road is progressing." It should say, "The cleanup at Dub Road is progressing." Hopefully, the blight's not progressing. Any other changes or corrections to that?
Yes, on page one, for approval of agenda, who approved that?
At the last meeting?
At the last meeting.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I think I did, but I couldn't tell you who supported it.
Any idea who seconded it?
You did, didn't you, Megan?
Probably. I probably did.
Yeah, just so you know, the, uh, the recording didn't work correctly.
Oh.
So, we're missing the first minute and a half of the audio. And then we're also, the camera froze and was right there on the podium there for the whole time, so.
And then also under D, um, letter A, it should say adoption of the 2021 international fire code.
Okay, we should have corrected that with the agenda correction.
So, instead of 2015, it's 2021?
Yes.
All right, any other corrections to the minutes from the August 19th meeting? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as amended and file.
I'll support.
All right, motion by Treasurer Jackson, support by trustee Deland. Any further questions on that? Moving on to consent agenda. Dispersments are at the backside of that this time, instead of...
Page thirty, thirty, I think.
So, we have dispersments totaling fifty thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Any discussion on those?
I just wondered who Andrew's Technology is.
They supply some computer software for the cemetery, I believe.
Okay. Oh, also, um, education and training to Shyla Keander? What is that? It was a forty-five and a twenty-five dollar.
What page?
On twenty-seven.
That was training for, uh...
Where's that?
No, it's training for the assessor.
Sheila Kiwander?
Yeah.
That be the fire department?
Uh, nope, it would still be the assessor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion to approve the dispersments and receive and file reports.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda and communications in the amount of fifty thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Pay the bills and file.
I'll support.
All right, motion by Treasurer Jackson, support by trustee Bowen. Any further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Ms. Kowski.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Yes. Deland. Bowen.
Yes.
Riley.
Yes.
Blackert.
Yes.
All right, moving on to boards and commissions, we have two tonight. We have the County Road Commission from eight-five and eight-nineteen, as well as the Planning Commission from July twenty-second.
I have a question on thirty-six for the planning commission minutes. It's down at the bottom on the Atkins Meadows. What is the PCE communication that they're talking about in that?
Well, our engineer has to sign off on any, any site plan. Uh, so, they do a review, and then they send back a letter, usually with corrections that need to be made. Um, and that's what they would be referring to.
Um, 'cause it looks like they didn't approve that for, for the Atkins Meadows to go forward.
Uh, they did, yeah. Uh, there on page thirty-six, bear a motion to approve the final site plan.
Yeah, and then there was, I don't know if that's...
We didn't back in July.
Oh, no, hang on. Nope. Yeah, some people said no, so apparently they didn't.
It's just like, I didn't know if that was wrong down there, like the roll call.
It's, the way they approached us, they made it almost seem as though us making a decision was gonna give them financial approval. So, what Brad said, he's like, "I don't wanna be in a position in this township where we're giving them approval, which is giving them some kind of financial leverage." If they wanna make the decision to move forward financially, that's up to them. But us granting them that, that's just, that's all, you know...
The site plants don't have, I mean...
They were see...
I guess I confused them about what you're referring to, so...
Because in the same meetings, there's Sparlingville Baptist Church, same thing, PCE communication. But they said they were willing to pay their own outside, um, outside engineers and...
Well, any development that comes to us, first of all, they have to put a, basically, a deposit down on all expenditures that we incur to get that site plan approved, so. Um, and then if, if they use more than that, they have to give us additional funds to finance those costs.
Yeah.
So, I'm not really sure. Um, and I did see that there's some language in here regarding a maintenance agreement, which I think is critically important. Um, you know, there should be, for the homeowners association, there should be a maintenance agreement requiring them to maintain things like the drainage and things of that nature. So, I think that's important. I don't know if that was the stumbling block or not, it's not really clear on that.
Yeah, it was just, the roll call just seemed weird because, you know, it says, "Motion denied," and then on the top of the next page, it says, "Motion carried." So, it was just kinda weird.
Yeah, so the first motion was to approve it, and then the second one was to receive and file.
Okay. So, are they going forward with it, or like, I mean, it was...
Um, I would assume that the, I, I, I mean, I'm guessing in...
You've had meetings since July, haven't you?
Trustee Locas, you can verify this, but I'm assuming that...
We voted it down in July, and then...
I'm assuming that you're waiting for the resolution to PCE's question in their letter?
Yeah.
Is that, okay.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have without those, I'm just...
Okay. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? All right, do we have a motion to receive and file the boards and commissions?
I'll make the motion that we receive and file the boards and commission minutes.
I'll support.
Motion by trustee Deland, support by trustee Riley, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none, that motion carries. Anyone signed up for public comment tonight?
Kevin and Bob, double.
Do you guys wanna step up to the microphone there?
Can you please say for the address, too?
Five oh seven six Burma Road. First off, you guys don't have to be shaken, 'cause we're not here to chew you out.
Yeah.
Our concern is the traffic on Burma Road. I'm sure you all know that it's a dead-end road and it's a very short road.
Dead-end road.
And the speed limit is posted at twenty-five, and we have people going down there at sixty. And there's, that I know of, three children that are either deaf or disabled on the road. And there's elderly people that come from, all from Allen Road and do a nightly or morning walk. And I'm just concerned about the speed that's going on, on the road with vehicles, motorcycles, delivery trucks.
School buses.
Yeah, yeah, even school buses.
Any residents, or...
Yeah, there's a couple of residents that just ignore this. They call me the Burma Road cop. I go out and I holler at them. And if I see somebody sitting on the road that I don't think long near, I go...
Do you have any signs that it, like, disabled child's...
There was... There used to be one, and it's gone.
Have you called the school district, the transportation department?
RISA is who's the bus, he yelled at them this morning, so...
Yeah, I didn't get the bus number.
I will get the bus number.
Because they've got, they've got monitors on there and they can tell if something else has been going down.
Yeah, and that's one of the buses that picks up one of the disabled children.
But I will continue to make sure you call and take them home.
Well, I talked to a police officer today, one on the phone and one in person at Burma Road, and they said that we need to contact you.
Every time we call the police about something, the speeders, the people, you know, flying up and down the road, "Oh, we just did work on our car, we're just checking it out." No, you don't need to check out your brakes on our road at the expense of one of our kids or grandkids. They said, "Oh, you have to take that up with your township."
So, we don't regulate that, but I will reach out to the Sheriff's Department tomorrow.
Yeah, 'cause it's really, really getting bad. And my other issue is, we had Neil Erickson come out last summer due to fencing issue behind us. So, being that Birchwood subdivision back behind us. And I believe he told Bob it was his nephew is my complainer, is my complaint, but they had a priv, I have a chain link fence, they had a privacy fence. The privacy fence is rotted, falling apart. Well, instead of him tearing it down, he put a brand-new privacy fence up in front of it. So, now there's my chain link fence, his broken-down fence, and his new fence. Therefore, all the weeds and stuff keep growing in between these fences, but they don't have to look at them, 'cause they have a privacy fence, and I have to look at them and I have to treat them to get rid of them. He claims he put in, gave them a notice to fix it or tear it down, them and their next-door neighbor, 'cause their next-door neighbor has a privacy fence that has falls over and lays on our chain link fence, and it's pulled our posts that are cemented right out of the ground. Neither one of them have done anything.
Have you been offered help and help?
Yeah, do you happen to have their address, by chance, or no?
I do, I did have their address, I don't have it right now.
I'd just be able to look it up tonight if I knew that, but...
So, our, our yard sits, like, between both of them, so both of their fences are on our fence.
Okay. We'll look into it, find out what's going on there.
Okay, thank you.
One thing on Burma Road, it's gonna be hard for a sheriff deputy to catch them, because you got this and you go like that. So, they could see them wherever they're sitting.
Yeah.
Well, they said it's your word against ours. Well, then come and sit down there.
Right.
Because trust me, if you sit down there for about two hours, you're gonna need your ticket pulled out.
They need to hide it.
My driveway, so they can't be seen.
Yeah, that's the best thing to do, yeah. But then they, there might be something about doing things on private land. I mean, out to my place, I had drug task force, drug, drug task force using my property to look at other people's property. I didn't bother with them, but you know, that's, that's what gotta be done there in order to catch them.
Well, we would like to have something done before we're not the kids or grandkids get killed.
Sure.
Because then it's gonna be too late.
I had one go by my place on Saturday, I didn't even see it, and I got nine-hundred foot of frontage. That's how fast that car was going.
Chief Gratz, do we have someone else sign up as well?
Uh, good evening, I'm David Josfak, I am the owner of D N M Services located at twenty-seven eighty-seven Barth Road. Um, reason for me speaking tonight is for two reasons. One, there's no posted speed limit on Barth Road. Um, we had called and made some complaints concerning the speed limit on there. We just assumed it was a thirty-five, because it was a residential gravel road and it goes into a sharp airpin turn. Uh, we were notified by the county that the speed limit is fifty-five miles an hour. We had asked the county, "Well, can you post it then? So, they can just rip it down the road and we can't do nothing about it." We'd like to see something reduce speed in that residential area.
So, I can tell you that there has been some legislative changes to that, so previously, we had absolutely zero say in that. It was all dictated by state law. Sheriff's Department would take care of all of that. However, they have given some voice to local municipalities, so we can definitely see what we can do there.
Uh, second part of my conversation here today is, I also own D N M Dumpster Service. Uh, we take all of the, uh, all the trash that we facilitate here in the county to St. Clair County. Um, there's a contractor in there who's out of Harbor Beach, who does the compaction for the trash and does services for landfill. From my understanding, he's, uh, his contract has been terminated and he has an, he's, he's working on an extension right now with the township, with the, uh, with the landfill. Um, he is charging not only me, but everybody else an absorbent amount of money for what we call pullouts. Pullouts are dumpsters that are non-hydraulic, to where we back it into Mr. and Mrs. Smith's house, they throw their debris in there, they don't have to worry about anything leaking out of the, the unit that's hydraulic that we've done, because, um, there is no hydraulics on there. So, once we take it to the landfill, we weigh in, um, we pull out, back up the hill to, to get rid of the trash. Um, there used to be a nominal fee of twenty-five dollars to, uh, to do what's called a pullout. A pullout is when we back our trailer in, at the guidance of the operator of the landfill, we back up, we open our gates, we have our chain ready, we hook it up, and he just makes one quick pull, all the debris comes out in a big cube, we pull out, we sweep out, he gives us back our pullout, and we're gone. It used to be a twenty-five dollar fee, now it's forty-five dollars, okay? Um, I, I think that's an excessive amount of money for someone to be making, especially when it's been, um, brought to, uh, that, brought to, uh, to me, that they do a lot of them per day. So, my understanding is, I don't know, they're kind of having a business within a business, to where they're being paid by the county, the township, whoever's paying the compaction company, their, their name is Talaski Excavating, and they're out of five-seven-seven-eight Sand Beach Road up out of Harbor Beach. I don't understand how they can double-dip. As in, we, as a sanitation company, as a dumpster company, are mandated to bring any, any refuge from St. Clair County to the landfill, that's by law. Now, once we do that and we pay our fee to, to the township, or to, to whoever we're paying the, the fee to, to the landfill, then we go back and we get hit, get hit with another set of fees. I, I feel that's very unfair. Um, and to have the board look into that and say, "What can be done with these crazy fees?" It's forty-five dollars now for a pullout, which takes them about two to three minutes to do. And from my understanding, what I've been told, they average about a hundred pullouts a day. So, on top of the fees that the county, that the county is paying them for whatever their contracted amount is, then on top of that, they have a business, what's called pullouts or digouts. Digouts used to be forty-five dollars, now they're eighty dollars. And it was, it came out of nowhere, uh, the land, uh, they had just put a little three-by-five cart up there on the waste station, and I had talked to them about it, and they said, "If you don't like it, get out of the dumpster business." It doesn't work that way to me, you know? Um, I feel that, um, it's, it's almost ran by the mob over there. Um, to where, like, why, why do I need to pay a fee if, if, if I'm being mandated to bring that here? That'd be like me coming here to write the, the taxes, a check for taxes and being charged, use the pen. Um, it doesn't make any sense. So, that's all I have to say.
So, we don't control that, just so you know? Um, it's actually controlled by the county, the county owns the landfill.
Okay.
Um, so, but I can definitely look into that and see how that's done, 'cause I wasn't familiar with that. I knew you had to pay a fee coming in.
Yeah, there's a fee coming in.
Based on the weight, correct?
And, and believe me, I agree that there should be some type of, you know, this is the only landfill that charges for pullouts and for digouts. Everybody else, uh, like, if a Canadian trash truck comes over and gets stuck, uh, just under the bad conditions, they don't charge it to just hook a strap to it and pull the truck out. There's no difference in our, our garbage, it's in the back of our truck, uh, the back of our trailer, and it's stuck in there, and just pull that out. It take, it take, literally takes two or three minutes, so.
Okay. Definitely look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Gratz, anyone else there? All right, you're up, sir. Well, he's not here. So, yes.
Nobody new. Okay, um, I got three new potential employees. Um, they both did well for us. And, um, one is actually fully trained, uh, he's Eric, his name's Eric, and the other two are not. Just looking for permission to move forward with their applications.
Any questions from the board? What stations would these, uh...
Uh, all station one.
Any questions on any of those?
How many will that give us, putting these three on?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two? On an, on an average, roughly how many, if you have a, say you have a fire, and it's just a, maybe a quick operation, how many people normally show up, or are they required to show up?
When I'm calculating the budget and when we're trying to do stuff, we do an average of five to, well, excuse me, seven to ten people. So, that's about average. So, here's the thing you gotta think about. Everybody works a different shift, so when we're hiring people, we look at, "Well, what shift you working? Are you working midnight, so you're available during the day, it's great." That's when we are actually short people. Um, when you're, if you're working afternoons, you're available days and midnights. We kinda work that rotation. That's why the levels are where they're at.
And it's just, uh, like I say, it's on call, it's just, just happened if you had too many people show up, which is never, there's never too many on anything, but...
So, um, especially with the new system we started way back in two thousand and ten, um, you know, that, that actually put it into too many people. Um, if it's a box alarm, they needed to be there, we need to help, so, um...
That's all I got.
All right, any other questions? What's the will of the board?
I'll make a motion to, uh, higher Nitzel, Rude, and Oliveris.
All right. We have a motion by Clerk Rubel, support by trustee Riley, any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Ms. Kowski, yes. Riley.
Yes.
Ms. Kowski.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Deland, yes. Bowen.
Yes.
Locas.
Yes.
All right, next we have the agenda item that we moved, which is ordinance one fifty-five G.
So, it's the, uh, right now, we're operating on the two thousand and fifteen international fire code. Um, recent, just recently, the, the code decks had went up to two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and this is, I, every time they go up, I gotta bring it here and have it approved. So, either we operate on, keep operating on the two thousand and fifteen, or we're actually married up with the, uh, not married up, um, so that when we're going through site plan review and we're talking about the same stuff, the building inspector also is in two thousand and twenty-one, too. So, we just make sure our codes match, so we know we're on the same page.
So, a lot of changes between the two.
Um, there is geared toward more of the, the E V industry, and, um, there's also changes with regards to occupancy size and sprinklers with the type, well, excuse me, the oxy-type and sprinklers, um, and stuff like that, which, you know, I'll be honest with you, uh, I don't think, at, what I've seen so far, it'd have to be new buildings only that, that have any effect on that, so, um...
All right, so you have the resolution to adopt, uh, adopt that, or the ordinance to adopt that on page seventy. Need to make a couple of corrections there. In the second line, it should say twenty twenty-one instead of twenty twenty-five. And then on page seventy-one, uh, near the bottom, uh, it should also say, uh, twenty twenty-one instead of, or... No, that is correct, right? Or is that twenty?
I got three corrections.
So, I did, after seeing the, the board agenda, I did go to the office today and, uh, went through and made the corrections, so I do have a corrected copy if people want it, yeah.
It's just a date change.
Yeah, just date changes, that's all it is.
Any questions for Chief Gratz? Uh, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion to adopt, uh... Adopt ordinance, uh, one fifty-five G.
I'll make the motion that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five dash one fifty-five G.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Deland, support by trustee Riley, any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
I'm sorry. Uh, Deland?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Ms. Kowski?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Rubel, yes. Bowen?
Yes.
Locas?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions for me?
Enjoy the rest of your vacation.
I'm gonna go have vacation, talk to you guys. If, if Alex shows up while I'm not here, I'm sure you got a cover.
Okay. All right, moving on to old business resolution twenty-five dash thirty. So, we talked about this a little bit last, last meeting. Uh, Michigan law allows for hosting municipalities, we're on page forty-six, you guys are... Allows for host municipalities in a landfill to charge an impact fee of up to thirty cents per ton. We adopted an ordinance in nineteen, or in nineteen ninety, um, which allowed, which has us collecting ten cents per ton. Those funds can go in one of two places, they can go into a trust fund, or they can go into a general fund. Either way, they have to be used kind of for the same, uh, same purpose. And considering the, the issues that we had at the landfill over the past several years, I think it's important that we, uh, increase that to thirty cents per ton. I think that would allow us to have some funds available to do things for residents that would be impacted by future failures at the landfill, should there be any, which hopefully there won't be, but, and my, my proposal is that we take the new twenty cents per ton and put that into a restricted trust fund. Um, that trust fund, uh, would have, per Michigan law, three board members, the township supervisor, uh, one person, just a general population person, and then, uh, one person recommended by the, the landfill, all have to be approved by the board. They would then, uh, make recommendations to the board on what those funds would be used for, and no, no funds could be expended without the approval of the board. So, they're just in a, they're an advisory board. I think this, to me, again, I think it just gives us a little bit more latitude if there's a failure there. You know, we could have some funds available to take some immediate remediation, where right now, it's, it's kinda difficult to do that. Thoughts on that? So, we would need to adopt, uh, ordinance one fifty-three dash B, which would give us the authorization to collect the additional twenty cents. Then we would need a resolution to establish the trust fund, uh, which would be resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty. Do we have questions on that? All right, do we have a, a motion by the board on ordinance one fifty-three dash B?
I'll make the motion that we adopt ordinance number one fifty-three B.
All right, motion by trustee Deland, do we have support for that?
I'll support.
Support by Treasurer Jackson, any further discussion on that? Roll call on that, please.
Deland, yes. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Kowski?
Yes.
Rubel, yes. Ruble, yes. Bowen, yes. Riley?
Yes.
Locars?
Yes. I got one good input, too. You have lots of different haulers. You have billion-dollar corporations like Waste Management. You've got Canadian haulers like Markov, M-Tera from Canada, and you have our local haulers that are not. Should it be more fine-tuned to cater to not just, you know, you get where I'm saying, it's,
Yeah, and I think we can.
It's heavy.
We touched on this a little bit last week, and unfortunately, the way the law is written, it doesn't give us the latitude to do that. We have to treat everyone equally. However, I think we should, you know, one of our responsibilities as trustees is to share our concerns with our legislators, and I think we should lobby for that, for that change.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions on that? Alright, now on resolution 2025-30 would establish the trust fund itself. Questions on that? Alright, do we have a motion on resolution 2025-30?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 2025-30, establishing the Kimball Township tipping fee impact trust fund.
Alright, motion by Treasurer Jackson, do we have support?
I'll support.
Supported by trustee Deland. Any further discussion on that? Roll call on that, please.
Jackson?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Kusakowski?
Yes.
Ruble, yes. Bowen?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Locars?
Yes.
H-53 just takes that same information and puts it into a policy document that we can put into our administrative policy and procedures. We don't need to take action on that, it's just taking that information and documenting it that way. Next item on the agenda is extension of water sewer along Allen Road. We have received a petition, which you have there. Over fifty percent of the residents have, or the property owners, have requested that extension. It would extend sewer along Allen Road from the pier all the way up to West Water. As you can see, it would include the school district, all the way down to the gas station at the corner there, on both sides of the road, so. Our next step is to pass this along to PCE to develop the plan. All those costs would be charged to the Special Assessment District, which we would have to create, which is not a fun process, but we will make it happen. Comments, questions on that?
Was there just one, one person that didn't want it?
Well, I don't know if they didn't want it, or if they didn't sign it, or they didn't get to them. I mean, the requirement, per the law, is that fifty percent of the total landmass has to sign for the petition, which is way more than, I think that way more than that, there, so. My guess is she probably doesn't want it, but I'm, I can't speak for her, because I'm not sure. Any questions on that? Alright, then we had some questions on healthcare coverage last meeting, so I did amend. The ordinance, if you look at page sixty-six, that is the current, and then, no, that is the, that would be the change. So, page sixty-eight is the current, page sixty-six would be the change. And so we added some stuff at the bottom of section two, under amendments. All eligible individuals may also elect to enroll their spouse and/or legal dependents in the plan or policy unless waived in coverage. And then I think down in section five, again, the last sentence, spouses and legal dependents are exempt from pre-room coverage if insurance is waived. I think that reflects what the question was last meeting. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I, I believe it does.
My only deal on it, you know, state spouse, and spouse, or family, most people have coverage like that, that they might be paying outside the township. And it brings the spouse, the spouse and the other dependents are included in that. So you've got your eligible person that's got the spouse and that, and then say you've got, the spouse has got insurance, and the eligible person is through that insurance. So you've got two issues there. So that's why, when I wrote it up the first time, that a spouse has to be included, because one or the other. I'm on my wife's insurance from the state of Michigan. Now, I'm not on insurance where she would have to be brought, and like, you're in the, I don't know if you're on your husband's or the school districts. And it's the same thing. If you were on the school districts, he would not be included in this, to get a stipend. So, it's just, that's the way, that's how it would work.
But the only way to get the stipend is to prove that you have insurance already, another form of insurance.
Right.
And none of these people that are getting the stipends now were getting it six months ago.
No.
It's all new.
But you had some, you had some things, that some people were getting stipends, so. And that's why it was brought up, that if one gets something, the rest should be able to get the same thing. You can't say, well, this one's got it, and nobody else can have it.
And it says, um, full-time. But we were handed out a sheet from March that says that the deputies are part-time, Tom Miracle is part-time, and Denise is part-time. And those are pretty much the ones that are getting the stipends now.
Yeah, but if I'm not, I don't know when it went into place. What is that sheet that you have?
It's not correct.
It was handed out, we got it.
We got that back in.
I don't know who made it up, but it's not correct.
It was in.
It was in our package one time, or handed to me, and I don't know.
No, I have one too somewhere.
You have it.
Somewhere.
Yeah, I don't know who did that. That's not correct.
See, that might have been one, forty hours was a considered permanent employee.
But it's been a while since that was handed out.
Yeah, that's, this is not, this was, I don't even know who authorized this, but it's not correct.
It was handed out to.
I have one too.
Oh, you.
No.
I'm pretty sure I got one in here.
I never received one, so that tells you something.
Neither did I.
Well, it was in my access, I didn't, I didn't pick it up myself.
So whoever made it up didn't know what they were talking about, clearly, because this is not correct. So the question is, and I, I mean, we're getting way off topic, so I'd rather just focus on what we wanted to do. So I think the idea was that the $250 for waiver just applied to the employee and nobody else, is what the goal was, and so these changes would reflect that.
Now, I do have a question. What happens if there's an employee that would be receiving this, but they are al, already receiving a stipend from their past employer towards their insurance?
I don't feel that that would be fair. Now they're double-dipping on money.
If, if it's a former employee, or employer, how are they getting a stipend?
Maybe they re, they could have retired?
Oh. Oh, you mean like Denise? That was part of her union thing?
No, Denise is under, is something, something different, yeah.
I'm just trying to do the whatevs, in case it comes up.
I know.
I think if they're already receiving some form of a stipend from somewhere for insurance, they shouldn't be double-dipping and taking one from us as well, I mean.
I mean, if they are, that's not our business, that's them, I don't know.
It's not, still, I don't think it's right, but.
I don't think there'd be a.
Yeah, we're not a factory, we're not producing revenue over here, this is not a.
It's not, yeah. It's like getting remarried and still doing that. I don't know.
Alright, so what's the will of the board on ordinance 157-B?
I would make a motion to make the amendment to ordinance 157.
Alright, motion by trustee Bowen, do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Deland, any further discussions? Roll call on that, please.
Excuse me just a second.
Bowen?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Kusakowski?
Yes.
Jackson?
No.
Ruble, yes. Riley?
Yes.
And Locars?
Yes.
Treasurer Jackson, do you have something else on that?
My question on, if we just did, that's where I got mixed up, that's why I tried to stop it. That we were doing 157A, right?
Uh, B. 157A is existing, 157B is the change.
I thought it was 157A we were voting on. But 157B, I would say no to that also.
Okay. Alright, moving on to water and sewer updates. We haven't updated water and sewer charges this year. We did run numbers again through Waterworth Software, projecting out approximately where we need it to be. I did include charts, you can see those on page seventy-seven. Hand on page seventy-eight, seventy-seven is the water fund. That dotted line is ultimately where you want your fund balance. Projecting out long-term, that's where the fund balance would be, is that top undotted line. Then on the sewer side, same thing. You can see the progression on the sewer side. The dotted line is where we ultimately want to be per policy, and then the solid line is where it would be based on projected changes. So with that said, we would propose basically a seven percent increase in water and sewer, and that's accommodating for the project that we've already approved moving forward with, which is the correction to the sewer system at Allen Road, which is gonna require a forced main or some other, we haven't gotten a final on that yet, but probably, likely a forced main, but it's probably gonna be in the five million dollar range. So it's a little bit heavier on the sewer side, obviously, because of that, than it is on the water side, but overall, you're looking at about a seven percent increase.
Is this taking effect for raising the employer?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Any questions on that?
Residents are already complaining heavily about water and sewer rates.
Sure.
And what's the, what do you tell people? I mean.
Well, water and sewer is a, it's called an enterprise fund, so the water and sewer has to be self-supporting. It's not a general government fund, right? So, the revenues that we generate in water and sewer by collecting fees has to be used to offset expenses for that system. So, we are facing a lot of additional criteria from Eagle related to both water and sewer. And I, I mean, I get it. I mean, there's been some failures in, not our system, but in other systems throughout the state. And so Eagle is requiring more and more reporting in those sorts of things, which yield more cost, you know, so. And unfortunately, we can't absorb that through the, you know, through the general fund. We have to absorb that through fees in water and sewer, it's the only way we can do it.
Sure.
Other questions?
So if we raise it like this, will we raise it over time? Like, we won't just jump a big seven percent raise all at once, right?
Well, it's either that or we, we increase it like fifteen to twenty percent, so, I mean, we, and I think maybe, maybe everyone wasn't on the board at the time, but we, we gave a chart of when we bond for that project, what the impact is, and how we can spread that cost out the most. And this is the way to do it the most. Other ways, I mean, it would be some far more difficult increases. But the nice thing about Waterworth is we can project out over years, as opposed to, I mean, in past practice, we were looking at, hey, what's our expenditures today, you know, what's our revenues today? And some of the information that we really needed in that software, we weren't really looking at. So this looks at all of our replacement costs. It's factoring in, I mean, we've entered all of the data for all of our lines, both water and sewer. It's estimating out forty years on what we need as far as replacement, and making sure that we don't put ourselves into a position where something comes up and we don't have the funds to support adequately the water and sewer. So you can see, I mean, this, this chart here is only showing out twelve years, but it actually goes out forty, forty years, so. This is, I mean, seven percent's a lot, but it is to minimize, it minimizes long-term.
What I'm hearing most is, it's like, so like myself, we only have sewer. But, but we've got friends that paid less for water and sewer than we do for sewer, because it's based on their water usage and
Right.
what's happening in the well.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't determine what the water usage is. And it's like, when we first got the sewer, it wasn't much, like thirty-five dollars, maybe, a quarter, and now it's more than double that.
Right.
And that's what I'm hearing more, it's like, well, we only have sewer, you know, so-and-so has water and sewer and they pay less. So that's, I mean, I, I mean, it's, we don't really have a choice, we gotta pay to get rid of it, so.
Yeah.
You know.
I mean, we can take a look at that, and I, I can't imagine that someone would be playing, paying less and more, well, it depends on their usage, and I think that's a tricky thing about your situation, is that we don't have a way.
Yeah.
And maybe there is, maybe there's a way for us to meter that moving forward, but.
Yeah, but that's, that, I mean, we gotta do it, we gotta do it, or that's just, I hear people saying that a lot.
The largest thing that affects us is the depreciation on everything. We're almost up to a half a million dollars now, depreciation, and that has to be covered by rates.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Alright, do we have a motion on ordinance 152-35?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 152-35, water and sewer rate increases.
Alright, do we have support? I'll support that. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Jackson?
Yes.
Kusakowski?
Yes.
Ruble, yes. Deland?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Locars?
Yes.
Alright, next up, we have our audit plan, so hopefully you had a chance to review that. The auditors did not find any material errors, which is good. They did make some recommendations to us as far as some of the things that we have going on. So I just wanted to cover those real quick, because we did develop a plan, we already implemented a lot of this plan. So the first one is financial reporting. This is one that eighty percent of municipalities are gonna get remarked on. State of Michigan, I believe it was three years ago, changed legislation related to municipal audits, and we, as a municipality, are supposed to prepare that audit report ourselves. And then the auditors come in and audit everything. We don't have a CPA on staff. The cost to have someone do this would be astronomical.
That way we were paying the UH.
Well, that's, there was, there was something a little bit different than that, but.
That would just give us an idea of what it would cost.
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be, yeah, it would be at least that. So, you know, our auditors just have told us, look, we'll continue to prepare it. If you guys come up with another plan, then, you know, they'll accept that, but they'll continue to do that for us. But in the meantime, we're not technically in compliance with state of Michigan regulation on that, which is the case for eighty percent of municipalities, by the way.
But an outside CPA was like, what, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour?
Yeah, and you're talking a lot of hours to prepare that, so I mean, it's, it would, I'm not sure why they did that, I mean, it was an unrealistic expectations for, you know, smaller municipalities to take that on. There were some comments, and I, Wes had emailed me about it as well, related to clarity on people's wages, and he says, you know, you guys should have a, like a spreadsheet with all that, and I go, we do have that, so. I'm not sure exactly what that was all about, but he did recommend that we have a summary sheet that we have every employee sign, so that it's crystal clear, you know, what their wages are, which I, I would think that they would know. Most of them have contracts, but who knows? So we, we did develop a form, we are gonna start passing that out to employees, just to. just to make sure that we have that on file. Goal is by the end of this month to have that in place with everybody having signed that. There was note in there about bank reconciliations. The bank reconciliations were completed. They just weren't completed as timely as they would like. So in talking with Tom, I think we're going to work with, George will probably talk with you about some things that are making it difficult to reconcile. Takes a lot longer because of some of the processes that we're doing with deposits. So UHY is coming in. Are they coming in next week? Yeah, they're coming in next week. We're going to meet with them. They're going to kind of give us some direction on that to make the bank reconciliations a little bit easier. Next up was policy and procedures. And again, I don't know, I don't understand where they're coming up with some of this, some of these comments, but there was some perception of unclear time clock policy. We have a policy. So I basically just took the policy and handed it to every employee, which they've had before, but I made them sign it this time.
I have a question about your time clock stuff. So they don't punch a time clock anymore, like physically be here and punch a time clock?
They do, yeah. They, they go online and punch.
So how do we know they're not in line at Tim Hortons and they're like, oh, it's taking longer?
Yeah, so I mean, we can, and I, I, there is an option to include geofencing in there, which we can do. We haven't done that, but we can certainly add that if we want to add geofencing to it.
It probably might be a bad idea.
Yeah.
So what do you do about the DPW that called at two o'clock in the morning?
Or they're out in the field and then they have to take a break in the field. I mean, I guess we just have to allow for some exception. How we do that, I don't know. I mean, we'd have to look into it.
I mean, there would be exceptions, but I mean, like on a daily, you know, seven to three-thirty or whatever. You know, not, not during emergencies or something like that, but it's just to keep everybody, you know...
Yep. All right. Next, we had escrow accounts. So these are the accounts, we kind of touched on this a little bit earlier. So a developer comes in, they're going to do a large development. It's got to go through the planning process. They put down money. We hold that money. As we have expenditures come up related to that project and that site plan, we draw money from those funds that they've deposited. At the end of the project, we refund any balance. If they're short, they have to pay us any difference. We've been working on this for a while. We, we've had a bunch of really, really old ones. We just about got through all of them. We have a few left. Those that we can't get ahold of, we're just going to publish in the newspaper. And if they don't respond, then we just move it into the general fund.
September twentieth.
And then we're also moving, so right now that, that's been done on spreadsheets, but we're going to move that to BSNA because they do have functionality. And we've got our trafs, our staff started training on that to use BSNA for that.
On the escrow stuff, I see like on the county road, when they're bidding out jobs, it's kind of like a bond or something. They have to pay the bid. Do we do that? It's still similar to that?
We have the option to do that. It's up to Planning Commission. When they approve a, approve a site plan, they can request a bond on a project. I don't, I don't think that they have done that. I know there has been discussion in the past about doing that, though. Next up were some budget entry errors. And I'm not sure what happened here. We haven't talked to BSNA yet, but Tom did put in some budget entry changes that we had approved as a board, and for some reason, they didn't reflect in the GL. So at the end of the day, it looked like we were out of balance on some things, and that was because of that. So we're going to, we're going to figure out a procedure to verify those moving forward to make sure that they've posted. And we'll get with BSNA and find out why it didn't correctly post.
That'll be a supervisor clerk thing to figure them out?
Correct. Yep.
What about the treasurer? Since it involves the money?
Well, the treasurer's department is not involved in that. They're not involved in budget entry. So we wouldn't, there's separation of responsibilities there, so that falls on the clerk's side. So none of these wrote to a material weakness, but we do have a plan to address each of those. Our goal is to not have those repeat at the next time. So eighty-four is the compensation summary sheet that we're going to use. Page eighty-five shows the time clock policy. And then that is that. Any questions on that?
I have a question about the time clock policy.
Mm-hmm.
Why are we going in and manually changing people's times?
Well, like you said, there are always instances of exceptions. So that's always going to be the case where you have to do that.
What about for office staff?
If they miss a punch, you could go in there. I mean, there's a whole bunch of things. They're not allowed to punch in five minutes, more than five minutes before, but if they do, you have to adjust it back to that, you know, because they're not, they're not allowed to do that, so.
It's got to be occasion, you know, like they get here early and it's like, I got something to do. I'm just going to punch in now so I don't forget.
Well, I mean, the problem with that is, I mean, you're trying to control cost and eliminate overtime, right? And if we don't, if we don't regulate that, then...
I mean, you're not doing it, you know, to try to sneak in a quarter hour of overtime.
Right, and it...
You just don't want...
No, I, I understand that, but at the same time, you know, again, it just, it allows us to control those expenditures.
Campus system just automatically, yeah, it's two thousand twenty-five. I imagine we have to...
You're correct. It is two thousand twenty-five. So we are looking at, by the way, some other options for time clock software, so...
Because I used to do that. I get there early. I want to clock in, so I'm going to go sit down.
So you can go to your department or, whatever, get a cup of coffee or whatever you do and...
Is it worth the money we're spending on these softwares for twelve people to use? I mean, I don't feel, I feel like that's a waste personally.
So what would you recommend?
Paper punching. We have a machine.
So then you have to manually sit there and calculate everybody's hours.
And we have a guy for that.
We do, but that costs money.
I think it's a waste.
And you're, you're more susceptible to errors.
Oh, I didn't...
I can't remember what it was. It's like twenty-five hundred dollars a year or something like that. Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's just a lot. We do have the paper punching system and it's more of an honor-based thing.
I worked with a guy. When we got to his house, we clocked in automatically. Like, when we got to his house, his system picked up our phone and it clocked us in.
So I don't think we need anything that extravagant.
No, but I'm saying, there's lots of options.
Yeah, I think that's just a waste.
Yeah, no, there, there are a lot of options, but, I mean, twenty-eight hundred dollars is nothing when you get the efficiency out of it. You reduce errors. I mean, when you're having to manually calculate someone off of a punch clock, it's susceptible to a lot of errors, plus all the time it takes to calculate it. I mean, you say we have twelve employees, but we have thirty-two employees over at the fire station. We have five people.
They're all using paper punching at the fire station.
We have a whole bunch. Well, they are today. They weren't yesterday. So, I mean, I, I don't know. They, they weren't. We had some problems with the current software that we're using, which is one of the reasons we're looking at a different one. But they were using that system.
So it's a GPS thing there to make sure they're where they're supposed to be when they punch in?
They can, yeah. Mm-hmm. Um, I'm not sure. I'd have to look. I mean, we're looking at other options right now, so obviously that's one of the things.
I'm not saying that everybody's out there cheating.
Right, yeah.
Like, people will. I'm just wondering, you know, how that works.
Yep. Any other questions on that? All right. Moving on to a property vacation near Marysville Truck.
Did we already do that?
We did a separate parcel for that, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it was, it was a different spot. So this is going to be, if you look at the very back of your agenda packet, you can see North Isabel Avenue up on the top of the page, kind of left center a little bit. You've got South Isabel. Well, there's Exian Isabel that we circled there, kind of in the middle. That's a, it was a planned subdivision in there. Clearly, that subdivision is not, not going to happen, but they want to be able to build across that. And so they're asking that we vacate that street. Which, I mean, for us, I mean, I believe this, when I looked, the plat was created back in nineteen-twenty, if I'm not mistaken. So, I mean, if, if nothing's happened in a hundred and five years, I kind of doubt that it's going to happen moving forward, so.
Kind of like Mr. Jowett's down here.
Correct. Yep. Yeah. So this resolution twenty-five dash thirty-one would just indicate that, yes, we are, we are consenting to that property being vacated. And other, other people have to sign off on that as well. You know, your utilities have to sign off on that. The county has to sign off on that. We're just one of many pieces that have to do that. They can do it this way, or they can go to court and do it. This way, obviously, it, it just makes a lot more sense, but... Questions on that? All right. Do we have a motion on resolution twenty-five dash thirty-one?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we adopt resolution twenty-five thirty-one.
Motion by trustee Deland. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Bowen. Any further discussion? Roll call on that, please.
Deland?
Yes.
Bowen?
Yes.
Isakowski?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Rubel, yes. Riley?
Yes.
Wilkers?
Yes.
All right. Any other audience participation tonight? All right. We'll move on to reports. For those who didn't hear, our county commissioner has resigned. Thought the letter was a little disingenuous, honestly.
But his whole campaign was to fight exactly what he's walking away from. But I mean, hey, he might have personal issues that we don't know about. There's...
I, yeah, I, I agree. And I, I was willing to just let that go until I, I read the letter and I'm like, my goodness, that's just, that's just horrible.
He could have just loved it at personal...
Yeah, yeah, and I, yeah, it could have just been that, but... And, and by the way, there are, there are things where you have to go into closed mea, I mean, that you generally would go into closed meeting for. Like, if we're involved in a lawsuit, typically, you're going to go into closed meeting because you're, you're negotiating with somebody to settle a lawsuit, right? So you go into a closed session because you don't want them to know your, your strategies behind the negotiation, right? So, but the commissioners that I've worked with and talked to, they're all very upstanding people. I've had no issues with them. They've been very upfront about issues like at the landfill. I mean, they didn't hold back anything, you know, when I talked to them. So I, I'm disappointed with it.
Who's disappointed with it?
I, I think he had trouble relating with the commissioners a little bit. And so it, it may work in our favor to have somebody, if the right person is in there, so that's the big key. So I think, and I haven't checked today, but he resigned on Friday, so they had the weekend plus a holiday. So today was the first day they actually addressed it. They were going to put an application out on the website where you could apply if you have interest in filling that spot. You have to apply by the, I'm, I think it was, I talked to Steve earlier today, Sam Asco. I think it was the twelfth. If you're interested, you have to apply by the twelfth. But you probably want to just double-check that on the website if you are interested. They'll do interviews on the sixteenth, and their goal is to have a special meeting and have somebody approved by the twentieth. Michigan law requires that they have it filled within thirty days, or they have to have the expenditure of a county wi, or an election, which, you know, would include us, obviously, which would not be fun, but... So hopefully, some people will step forward. If you know somebody that you think would be good, encourage them to step forward. It would be nice for us to have some good representation for our district in that spot. And by the way, I agree with a lot of what Bob stood for. I think, you know, he stood for our district, which I appreciate. I think it's easy to get into a position like that. You kind of, you kind of think of the whole grand, grand thing and, and not necessarily people specifically in your district, but Bob was very dedicated to people in his district, and I do appreciate that. So hopefully, we can get somebody that can work with the other commissioners and also be a good representation for us. So if you know somebody, encourage them to apply. Watch the county website for that application. If you know somebody, print it off for them and take it to them, you know, fill it out, don't fill it out for them, but get it to them and encourage them to, to do that, so. And that's all I have for today. Clerk Rubel.
Wow. The newsletter is going to be coming up for this fall. We need a fall cleanup date.
Okay.
We had two water main breaks today over by the Indian Wood School. There is no boil alert. They were able to repair it, which is nice. The DPW is doing hydrant testing right now for our fire ratings. They're actually saving us thousands of dollars doing it instead of our engineering firm. That being said, I ended up having to have a purchase of the hydrant, the fire hydrant testing equipment. It ended up being one thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents. The product, I have no choice to do it. Originally, we had, Fort Hearn Township was going to lend us the equipment. And at the last minute, their equipment was not working properly. So we went to Marysville, and Marysville was in the same boat. Their equipment was not working. OSHA is requesting us to have it done by this Friday, so I had to get it done. Otherwise, it was going to affect all of us with our fire rating. So I do need to get an approval for this one thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and twenty-nine cents.
All right. Do we have a motion on that?
Also.
Motion by trustee Riley. Do we have support?
I'll support.
Support by trustee Deland. Any further discussion on that? Roll call on that, please.
Riley?
Yes.
Deland?
Yes.
Isakowski?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Rubel, yes. Bowen?
Yes.
Wilkers?
Yes.
Thank you. The cameras are in, in the front of the building and in the hallway, if you've noticed them. The camera, the, the TV screen is up by your mailboxes so we can watch what's going on. Those were purchased with grant money. And we also just received another ten thousand dollar grant, so we're kicking along.
Does it record?
It records for up to thirty days.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I'm done.
Treasurer Jackson? Okay, just to touch on that hospitalization. And I think it's going to affect some people the way it is because I don't get it and I don't plan on getting anything for it. But this is how it works. Like I said, I'm on my wife's insurance. So no other than what I did, I would not get anything. But out of my social security check comes a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Out of hers comes a hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. So now there's no way I can get any of that. I don't plan on it anyway. But say a, a person that works in the office now, that their husband or wife has got hospitalization and they're having to pay for some of that, they're not going to be able to have it because of the other person being on it. Because one person's going to be being billed unless you're on Medicare, getting social security, where they take it out of two people's check, or one person if there's only one person there. So just letting you know to why I went that route. I, I'm not, I'm just doing it to help people out that might need it. Otherwise, we're going to end up paying seventeen thousand or twenty thousand dollars a year for full coverage. And because that's, primarily says that. If you don't want it to cut, we're going to have to supply full coverage hospitalization for those people. Instead of a thousand dollars a year, we're going to have to pay seventeen thousand or more. Just so you know. Anyway, the fire truck situation is getting worked on. Right now, it's a five hundred and fifty thousand dollar fire truck. Five-year plan based on four point seven-three percent. It's going to be a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seventy-four dollars and eighty cents a year. Seven years, ninety-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-two, forty-four a year. Ten years, seventy thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-nine cents, four point seven-nine percent. And for fifteen years, fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents, at five point one-nine percent. And that's something to think about before we decide. It's already being built. We're primarily locked into it, but it is an expensive proposition.
How much will we save, George, if we did a shorter term?
What's that?
The loan. How much would we save if we did the five or seven-year?
I'd have to figure that out. I just got this the, the other day. If you look at it there, figure it out. Because you got interest weighted four point seven-three percent a year, so. It might be compounded every thirty days, too, so I'd have to figure it back, but I'll get, I'll get you answers on that. Anyway, on the financial end of it, cash distribution account is at one million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-five... Anyway, on the financial end of it, uh, cash distribution account is at one million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents. Uh, the project funding, the savings account that, uh, that the nursing home that's going up on Range Road has eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents left in it. The tax account, which, uh, last quarter, last fifteen days is in the mail, to being distributed, is one million, sixty thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-five cents. Trust and agency account, which had those performance bonds in it, is less now. That's down to forty-eight thousand, twenty-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Utility account, one million, five hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and five cents. And then we have the four CDs. I'll just give you a total figure, I'll round them off. North Star's two hundred and sixty-six thousand for one, two hundred and forty-nine thousand for another. Tri-county's two hundred and seventy thousand, and Advia is at a hundred and five thousand. Bringing the total to five million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-three cents. That's where we are. If we need cash, of course, we can't use the tax money because that's going to somebody else. So you figure that out down there, we got a little over four million dollars in funds if we need them. That's all I got.
Trustee Locers?
I don't have a really report, but I had some ideas, maybe some perspectives, um, with our website. Is there any way we can have a section on the website to direct residents to local, like, Dave, for example? Having him featured on our website, so people know they can get their wood, they can get services from a local person, a retailer, a business, whatever it is, you know, I'm saying? Like, they're, they're all paying taxes. Is there some way we can feature them on our website to create more revenue for them versus them going out of the township and doing business with other people?
Yeah, we can look at that.
And then, two, um, I heard the owners of, uh, Blue Water Lift Truck had sold, and they're talking about putting a gas station there. And that's one of the reasons I wanted to get involved with the planning commission, because so often we will just, like, it's, it's happening in Porion right now. They're just installing dispensaries everywhere, which it's awesome to have options. But pretty soon you have so much, it eats away the, the bottom line. Like, it does, we're not a, this isn't like a home, we don't have five thousand people per square mile, we have a rural area. So to put a gas station right there, you, you take money from Brian and Mark over at the Sunoco, you take money away from Speedway. We take money away from the Sunoco down on Dove and Twenty-Fourth Street. So maybe that has to do with the zoning commission or Board of Appeals, I don't know what it is, but to just continue to just let businesses open because they want to without having any care or concern for how that affects other businesses, I think that's just...
So, it, it's, it's a great point. So we, we have zoning, right? So, uh, that's one of the main responsibilities of the planning commission, is to, um, develop a master plan. Uh, and then the zoning ordinance reflects, you know, what's in the master plan, right? So the master plan kinda lays out where we want different types of businesses. And then that's followed up with, in the zoning ordinance, which spells out, you know, what types of businesses are allowed within which districts.
Sure.
Right? Uh, some of them are just flat-out allowed, right? We have really no say, uh, at all over, over what goes there. Uh, some business types, though, require what we call a special exception. So there's some consideration that the planning commission can take into account related to the business type. It's allowable as long as we meet the requirements of, you know, whatever the planning commission may decide. So I don't know, I, I'm, I'm guessing that's commercial there, I'm, I'm guessing that gas stations, I think, if I'm not mistaken, and I could, I could be wrong, but to the best of my knowledge, gas stations are always a special exception use. So, uh, they're gonna have to come to the planning commission to get approval to, uh, put a gas station in a location like that. Me personally, I'm, I'm all about free market, just personally. Um, I know people get upset, hey, this dollar store's going in here, we already have a dollar store. Yeah, right, right, exactly. I don't do the market studies.
Sure.
Right? It's that owner's responsibility to do a market study and understand what the market can support, um, if they open another dollar store. Same thing with the gas station, it's the responsibility of that particular owner to do, uh, their studies and make sure that, you know, it's a viable option, financially for them, to make it successful. It's kinda the responsibility of the planning commission to, you know, put, you know, that's why you use a special exception use, is they can put some criteria in there, um, that makes sure that if it's not successful, you know, what, what protections do we have, right? Um, so those are some of the things that the planning commission can do.
Sure.
But it all starts with the master plan, uh, which is something that most people honestly don't pay attention to. They have no idea it exists, they have no idea why something can go somewhere and can't go in other places, and it's all based on that master plan and then on the zoning ordinance, so.
Go ahead, thanks.
But I would start there, look at the zoning ordinance, see if it's allowable there.
Sure.
And under what conditions? Other questions?
Certainly.
Okay. Trustee Deland?
Um, I was just wondering, um, do you still have a part-time employee over at the DPW? How long are you gonna keep him? And usually we get a college kid, maybe gone by now.
They're just finishing up some different things.
I didn't know if you were planning on keeping him until the park closed, because I think the park guy was gonna work with DPW, and he was gonna be full-time. So I didn't know how you were gonna do with the...
I, I was trying to hope, I was hoping to keep him until the first of October. Because the plan is, uh, what they need to accomplish should be done by then.
Just checking. That's all.
All right, trustee Bowen?
I just wondered, when you do the things to fix the problems in the audit, do you always singly come up with those your own, so? Or has that been a board thing?
Uh, it's never been a board thing. It has, however, been a department head thing, so all, we meet weekly with all the department heads. Um, they all contribute to that, and we come up with a, generally with a plan. A lot of times I'll develop the basis of it, and then we'll discuss it, make recommend, you know, make recommended changes and that sort of thing, but...
Okay.
It's kind of a teamwork thing.
I just wondered, because I stumbled upon this book, and I'm wondering if we all can get copies of this, if the township can produce these for us.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Um, I just borrowed this one, but it says that the board should address the problem areas, so instead of the department heads, we should be discussing the problem.
So, I mean...
That's according to A.T.A.
But I, I don't think, I mean, the board doesn't know the day-to-day operation, and they shouldn't know. Um, that's not really the purpose of the board. The board's more driven by policy, right? So you're going to, uh, look at that plan if you guys have changes that you think need to be made to the plan, which we kinda talked about some of those things, and we make those changes to the plan. And then ultimately, you are, as a board, responsible for making sure that we comply with that plan, right? So, uh, you would follow up, um, as a board, to make sure that we've done the things that are in the plan. Um, so it kinda becomes your responsibility for the plan. I don't know that necessarily developing the plan is really the best, because you're not involved in the day-to-day operation.
Right, I just, I mean, I've never been here for an audit before, so I don't...
Are you guys following the rules?
(laughing)
It's weird.
But, no, this book, um, there's, I actually have two of them. If you guys could get some copies for us, like, there, there's a ton of information. I've got this one and this one.
Yeah.
So they'd be good for us, the whole new.
Yeah, if you guys want those, I can certainly get them for you, just let us know.
I would like a set.
Okay. Anything else, trustee Bowen? Trustee Riley?
Yeah, I think the one thing that you were discussing, I can bring it back to the Dollar Trees. Honest to God, you know, I just don't see what we're doing. I mean, I'm not against it, but I see Porion Township sticking another one up on a corner of, uh, Michigan and, and, uh, here, and they got enough in the township to cover it. But I look at those, and I question the approval rate. I don't care if they're a Kimball or a Township, where they're at, what the heck are we doing? I mean, it's taking it from that per, that town, that building to this building, to that building, and it's, it's... For the, for the business and the townships, it's ridiculous. And that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah.
Second thing is, how are we doing on our aim, or on our blights, how are we doing? I haven't heard anything lately.
I can tell you that we've been in court a ton on Blight, but, um...
You what?
Have been in court a ton. I think we had seven cases last week alone. Um, so, I mean, it, it, it makes a difference. The problem is, you gotta have compliance, so, um... I, I, I can say that not everyone is complying, even with court dates.
Really, even with them?
Yeah.
Well, I, I think it's one of those ones that they have to be brought, uh, brought not only to the court, but finding any way we can. I mean, it's ridiculous for the people that live in the areas, uh, to have Blight next door or down the street. Ridiculous, because they're paying taxes, they live in the township, and how can people get away with it? I mean, I'm dead in favor of punishment to places that are, uh, because we, we, I will give credit to at the time, I don't know how it's doing with their junk dealer. But, uh, it's, it's something we have to stay on.
Mm, oh, yeah, mm-hmm.
And if realized with our bill inspector, he's also the guy running the ball on that, which is, is fine if he can handle everything wonderful, but if he can't, then I think we have to look at a different direction.
Okay.
Okay?
Can I, can I ask you a question? I'm sorry, I don't, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I was at a friend of ours today, and, um, he lives next door to one of the Blight places right over on Allen Road. And, um, it's, um, he said that, oh, yeah, Neil was over, and they're getting prices to take the building, the house.
Yeah, so there is, there is one where we are, we dig...
And there's vehicles around.
We got permission from the court to, uh, to do that, to take, to tear it down, so...
But it was pretty pricey, he was saying some of the numbers were...
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's not gonna be cheap.
Like eighteen, twenty thousand.
I mean, the last time we did it, it was, uh, I believe, about twelve, twelve thousand.
So I have a question, have a question about that then. So instead of us paying that out, we have it toward home and all that stuff. He lives right next door, and he's been wanting to buy that piece of property for a while. How do, I mean, we can't, we can't sell it 'cause it's not ours.
Right.
So our only option is to tear it down and make the homeowner pay for it.
Right.
We can't say, you can buy it and you can have the cost of...
Yeah, that would be nice. Yeah, I don't, we don't have any leverage to, to do that. I mean, if they, if they, um, fail to pay their county taxes for, I think it's three straight years, then the county can foreclose on the property and will turn around and sell it, but...
It's another one of those, money's not the issue.
Yeah.
It's kind of, uh, it's kind of old, and my dad was the same way, it's mine.
Right.
I, I was just wondering how we, how we did that.
Yeah, that's where we're at on that one, we're just, we're gonna take bids on, on demo, so.
All right.
Anything else? All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-four?
I'll support.
We have a motion, we have support, any further discussion? All those with favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Yeah, the Dollar General thing's crazy. I think they're opening another one up in Marysville, they'll chase bank on Bush Highway.
So, uh, so...
The state of Oklahoma passed a statewide ordinance.